I'd like to call to order the October 15, 2013, regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. I'd invite you to stand if you like. I'll offer the invocation and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, thank you for another wonderful day in Bowling Green. And thank you that we live in this time, that we can enjoy our lives and enjoy this community. We pray that you give us guidance as we consider the things that come before us tonight and honor you in all that we do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call a roll.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Denny.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here.
We have some awards and recognitions tonight. I'll start with the two that I have. We want to recognize James McCubbin, who has retired as a Master Police Officer with the Bowling Green Police Department after 20 years of service. And I want to specially recognize Deputy Fire Chief David McCarty, who has joined us tonight, is retired after 22 years of service in the fire department. Thank you, Dave, for what you've done. We appreciate it.
(applause).
Did you have some?
Thank you, Mayor. I had the pleasure of attending two special events this week that I just wanted to pass along some comments about. One, Lada Becker.
Becker.
Becker, who is very active in our international community, hosted a Meet Our New Neighbors reception for the Burmese community. And Commissioner Waltrip was also there. And it was very, very enjoyable. And I want to personally commend her for her work and encourage everybody, when these type of events come up, to take advantage and go out and meet some of your new international neighbors. It's quite an eye-opening experience. Also, I want to commend the fire department for putting on the festival at Home Depot this week. And I know this is part of Fire Prevention Month. And I know that the children that were there really enjoyed it, and I know they learned a lot from having that. So it was a good thing.
Children of all ages.
Children of all ages.
All right. Thank you. Any other awards or recognitions? Mr. DeFebo, do you have any comments?
Thank you.
You have any comments for tonight?
Yes, there'll be a need for an executive session. Kate will read the reason.
Pursuant to KRS 61810B, for discussions on the future acquisition or sale of real property by the city, but only when publicity would likely affect the value of the specific piece of property to be acquired for public use or sold by the city. And KRS 61810C, for discussions of proposed repending litigation against her on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, and second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Have approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of September 17, 2013, and the special meeting on September 23, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Is there any discussion? Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. We have regularly scheduled on our agenda a time for public comments. If there's any member of the public that would like to make a comment to the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners, we have that time set aside for you now. If you please raise your hand. Seeing no one, we'll continue with the first item on the agenda, Municipal Order 2013-159.
Municipal order approving the promotions of Dustin S. Rockroar to the position of Deputy Fire Chief, Lee H. Hatcher II to the position of Company Commander EMT, and S. Jett Miller to the position of Fire Apparatus Operator EMT in the Fire Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, and second by Denny. Mr. DeFebo.
With the retirement of David McCarty, this put in motion a need for promotional backfills. Todd Napier, on behalf of Greg Johnson, will make the promotional recommendations to the commission. Todd?
Thank you. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. As Mr. DeFebo said, with the retirement of Deputy Chief David McCarty, a position was opened in that particular rank, Deputy Chief. We're here to recommend Company Commander Dustin Rockroar for that position. Dustin Rockroar's been with the department 15 years. It's about January 98. You stand up, Dustin, and your family, if they want to stand up also. Promoted to Fire Apparatus Operator in 2003, promoted to Company Commander in 2007, and he's been a real integral part of our department, our SCBA maintenance program. And also, he has pretty much developed our whole ropes technical rescue program and implemented that program. Been doing that for the past 10 years. He has also successfully passed our promotional test, assessment, center, evaluation. And we feel he's very well-suited for this position. Dustin. Also, that opens up a promotional position for Company Commander, which is what Dustin is moving from. We're here to recommend Fire Apparatus Operator EMT Lee Hatcher. If you please stand up, Lee, if your family wants to, that's fine also, for that position. He's been with the department for about nine years, since October 2004. He was promoted to Fire Apparatus Operator in 2008. And Lee currently manages our hose testing program, which is an annual test that we do on every bit of our hose. And if you think about that, that's a lot of hose. So he's been successful in that. Again, Lee has also successfully passed our promotional testing procedure and assessment With the promotion of Lee Hatcher, opens another position for an FAO, Fire Apparatus And we're here tonight to recommend firefighter EMT II, Jett Miller. Mr. Jett, please stand, for that position. Jett's been on the department for 10 years, since about October 2005. SCBA technician in our maintenance program, so he is also active in the department. Firefighter II since July 2010. And again, he has also successfully passed our promotional exam and our internal FAO practical evaluation. So with that, I would like to recommend all three of those for promotion, and we're looking for big things out of all three of them. Thank you.
Congratulations to all of you. But there's this little thing called a vote that we've got to do here, so we'll get the formalities out of the way. Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Congratulations again. I know there'll be a few of you that want to get up and leave here in just a few minutes. We'll get through the promotions and appointments. Municipal Order 2013-160.
Municipal order approving the promotion of Catherine P. Maroni to the Community Center Supervisor in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Denny, and second by Hill. Mr. DeFebo.
With the retirement of Sandra K. Young, this created an opening for this particular supervisory position. I would ask Brent Belcher to come forward to make his recommendation. Please notice the nice suit.
Sir.
Nice suit.
I thought it was nice. I appreciate it. It's a pleasure to be in front of you today. We have two recommendations. This is the first of those. Tonight, the first one is for Kathy Maroni to be promoted to Community Center Supervisor. Kathy is a unique employee. She's been with us for a little more than two years at Parks and Rec. But prior to that, 18 years working with Russellville as Assistant Director and Director. So Kathy has a wealth of knowledge, some background that even I use. The thing about Kathy you have to know is, in the past two years, she has been instrumental in increasing our participation. Her creativity and ingenuity is something that we really respect, and we think the future is definitely bright for our FO-MOXI Community Center. It's in great hands, and that's the first recommendation is Kathy Maroni. Kathy is here today.
Kathy, would you stand so that we can let people see who you are? Congratulations. Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2013-161.
Municipal order approving the promotion of Bobby Dwayne Greathouse to Senior Parks Facility Maintainer in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebo.
With the retirement of Tommy DeBree, this created an opening in Senior Parks Facility Maintainer. I would ask that Brent Belcher, again, come forward to make his recommendation for promotion.
Hello again, second time. This recommendation is actually about Dwayne Greathouse. Unless Dwayne's changed clothes and changed identity, he's not here tonight. But Dwayne started in '08 in our cemetery division, transferred over to our Parks Maintenance Division. Has been working with us for the better part of two years now. Dwayne brings some experience, such as he has his Class A CDL, so he can drive anything that's movable for us. Lot of experience with equipment, backhoes, dump trucks, all those sort of things. So besides being a Parks Maintainer, Dwayne's one of these gentlemen that gives us the ability to do a lot of additional things in our department sometimes. Through projects and such, we find ourselves needing to accomplish. So without hesitation, we recommend Dwayne Greathouse for the recommendation.
All right. Thank you. Any comments or discussion? Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal Order 2013-162.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Christopher W. Cash to the position of Police Officer in the Police Department.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebo.
We had an internal opening developed in the Police Department. We're here to fill that tonight. Just as a reminder, the promotional list started with 102 applicants. Of that number, 63 passed a written test. I mean, 37 passed a written test, 24 passed a physical, and 17 passed a polygraph, and 10 were interviewed. From that process, it is Doug's belief in that department that Christopher Cash should be recommended for this position. Chris has a BA, and also has 13 years of experience working with KSP.
All right. Any discussion or questions? I think Mr. Cash is with us. Would you stand, and we'll acknowledge you too. Congratulations. Any other discussion? Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal Order 2013-163.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Pamela R. Hurt to the position of Office Associate in the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Rick Williams. Mr. DeFebo.
A lot of retirements tonight. Patty Lee retired after a long career with Bobby Phelps in the Public Works Department. That created the need for an office associate. Went out to public solicitation to tell you how much people want to work here. We had 188 applicants for one position. 43 were tested, nine were interviewed, and from that rose to the top, we believe Pamela Hurt. Pamela has 23 years of office experience, and she most notably worked for P&amp;Z. I believe Pamela is here.
And Ms. Pam is here. Would you stand up? Well-known to all of us. Congratulations. Any discussion?
It's a shame she has to put up with Bobby.
You do know that you're signed up with Bobby, right? Okay. Please call. Okay. Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Congratulations. And Municipal Order 2013-164.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Drew W. Cassidy to the position of firefighter EMT in the Fire Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, and second by Hill. Mr. DeFebo.
This all started with Dave McCarty, and has distilled now to the need to fill a firefighter EMT. You know, we have a promotional list, and this gentleman, Drew Cassidy, was on that list, and has been recommended to fill this position. He has two years of active firefighting experience with the city of Covington. So we're lucky and honored to have him work with us. I'm not sure if...
He's not here with us tonight. He's still working, so.
We recommend his appointment.
Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal Order 2013-165.
Municipal order authorizing a continuation of software subscription and maintenance services from OpenText Incorporated in the amount of $26,126.2.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, and second by Hill. Mr. DeFebo.
Maintaining a high-function IT department requires us to also maintain a number of contracts for support. Tonight, we're here to ask you to, again, renew the maintenance contract with OpenText, sole-source vendor, for support of our document management imaging function. There is no increase in costs, so that's always good news. Lynn is here, if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions from Mr. Hartley? Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal Order 2013-166.
Municipal order approving a contract through cooperative purchase with Kaizen Technologies of Louisville, Kentucky, under the Kentucky Pricing Contract, for the Microsoft Exchange Configuration and Migration Services in an amount not to exceed $47,000, and rejecting all bids received for bid number 201348.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, and second by Williams. Mr. DeFebo.
As the commission may be reminded, we are migrating from group-wise to Microsoft Exchange for communications, within and outside the city. We went out to bid for configuration and migration services. The bids revealed that all of them were over our budgetary amount. One of the bidders, Kaizen, was already on the state list. We're here tonight to reject the bids that we cannot afford, and to say to Lynn, take $47,000 in contract with Kaizen to do what we need to do. So Lynn is here, if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions from Mr. Hartley? Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal Order 2013-167.
Municipal order declaring city-owned property located at 1117 Cabell Drive surplus, and authorizing and accepting bid number 201405 for the sale and development of 1117 Cabell Drive from David Holland, Doing Business as Signature Signs Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $144,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebo.
Thank you, Mayor. We're here tonight to ask you to accept the offering or bid from David Holland to purchase the old Cabell Street firehouse. During retreat, we talked about selling that, and we decided to go out to public solicitation and ask not only price, but purpose. We had three people respond to that. Mr. Holland offered the best price in what we felt was an appropriate use. That use is to have this as an assembly place for his signature sign business, which is fairly contiguous to this Cabell Street location, just to ensure that purpose met community need. We had a meeting last night with the neighborhood. I was told by email from Brent Childers that that was well-received by the neighborhood, and we recommend your approval and acceptance of the offer.
All right. Any discussion?
Only that when we received that email from Brent, I thought that was very well-done. And I'm glad that the neighbors all agree that this was a good use, and appreciate David's method that he went about purchasing the building.
I think it's a good deal for everybody.
Yes.
Him and us.
Any other discussion? Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal Order 2013-168.
Municipal order authorizing change order numbers three and four to the contract with AMEC Environment and Infrastructure Incorporated of Nashville, Tennessee, for final design services for Butler County landfill improvements, bid number 201220, in the amount of $24,500.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, and second by Hill. Mr. DeFebo.
As the commission knows, we are in collaboration with Kentucky Department of Waste Management to complete the improvements to the Butler County landfill. We're pretty excited about it. We expect by about three months or so, we'll be under contract for improvements, and we need to go through a number of change orders. I thought it'd be helpful to have Matt Powell here to share some of the good news, what's going on there, and the creative things we're doing. With your courtesy, I ask Matt to come forth.
Come right ahead.
Evening.
Good evening.
It's me again. As you all know, we've been working on this for a long time. In essence, wanted to give you just a brief synopsis of what ground we've covered since the last time I was here, where we're at, and what the good news is. I'll begin by saying that the Kentucky Division of Waste Management, in a recent meeting in August, expressed gratitude that we'd gotten a set of final plans to them, a set of final specifications. We went through those, and have set a preliminary timeline to bid Phase One of the project in November, with construction slated to begin next spring at a cost of $1.485 million that will be covered by the Division of Waste Management. In that final design review, we discovered our final, what we hope is our final nested doll. This project has been a feasibility analysis in conjunction with the construction design. So each group of questions that we answer reveals a series of smaller questions. And hopefully, we've gotten all the way down to the final one. We're looking at an anchor trench that was not exactly what the Division of Waste Management had in mind. We spent the last six weeks developing some alternatives, and we feel pretty confident that, once we've selected an alternative for that anchor trench, that we're going to be able to move forward to the bidding process. The project, because of those series of questions that always seem to reveal more questions, has stretched well beyond its original timeline. Doesn't necessarily mean that that's any particular agency or person's fault, it's just in the nature of the beast. Because of that, I'm bringing change orders C and D, or three and four, if you prefer, to you, for 24 or 25. That should cover all the project administration costs that we perceive until December 31 of this year. Just so that you all know, we should be seeing each other at least twice more. Part of the reason that we've expended the full budget was that we've broken this project into two parts. Phase One will be leachate consolidation and minimization. And Phase Two will be leachate treatment. So Phase One is the one that I was talking about for roughly $1.5 million. After Phase One is complete, six months later, we'll evaluate it. When we evaluate how much water we've got, then we can proceed with the final design of Phase Two. Final design of Phase Two will be change order five, or E, if you prefer. And then a second construction project, which will be funded through the Division of Waste Management for the construction of Phase Two. And splitting this project into two large pieces is one of those hurdles we've overcome as we've moved forward with this. But I'd like to offer myself to answer any questions that you may have about the project, where we're at, and where we're going.
Any questions, your comments? I appreciate the hard work that you've done. I know this is a difficult situation.
Could you give a summation of the reward we're going to get from this?
At this point, we've, the city of Bowling Green will have put about $66,984. I said about. We're going to put $66,984 into this at this point. Division of Waste Management's put $125,000 into just the feasibility analysis and design. Like I said, Phase One, we're pretty confident our estimate's close. It's $1.485 million. Once Phase One is complete, we're going to have to put another amount roughly equivalent to change order A, or One, which was about $40,000, into the analysis of what Phase One achieved. Once we have that new number, that extra $40,000 expenditure on our part, will buy us into Phase Two. If Phase Two proceeds the way that we have it now, it's going to be roughly about another $500,000 that will come from the Division of Waste Management. So a total investment from the state of just under $2 million, a total investment by the city of Bowling Green of $100,000 to $125,000.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. I think we're ready for votes. Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal Order 2013-169.
Municipal order accepting and authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement on behalf of the city of Bowling Green with the Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet for Federal Victims of Crime Act 2003 funds in the amount of $35,978.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, and second by Hill. Mr. DeFebo.
The criminal justice system is often focused generally on the accused, or often those found guilty of a crime. But there's also the victim. For the last 21 years, the city of Bowling Green has been using state money and its own money to help victims of crime to deal with the impact on their lives. The staff person who's been leading this for most of that period of time has been April Foulter. She's here tonight to recommend to you all that we, again, try to access $35,978 of VOCA money to help victims. If you would like to chat with April, she'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any comments or discussion? Thank you for coming, anyway, April. Appreciate it. Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal Order 2013-170.
Municipal order approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a sanitary sewer easement with Warren County Water District related to replacement of a sanitary sewer pump station located on city park property adjacent to Weldon Pete Park.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, and second by Hill. Mr. DeFebo.
Warren County Water District has requested an easement. We all, I think, are familiar with their pump station near Weldon Pete Park that is not only not functioning well, but prone to flooding and somewhat unsightly. This would replace that, taking it out of the flood area and putting it underground. I think we're happy to help our collaborator in this, and we recommend your approval to give the easement.
Any questions? I believe we've got somebody from the Warren District here.
The only comment I would have on this is that, of course, Alan Valine's retired just recently, and thank him for his many years of service through the Water District to our community, and congratulate John Dix, who is the new general manager. District to our community, and congratulate John Dix, who is the new, uh, general manager. Maybe the right term, but, uh, John will do a fantastic job with, with his position as well.
Certainly will. Any questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Danning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wolferson?
Yes. Thank you for coming. First reading of ordinance, BG 2013-34.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending chapter nine, general offenses, subchapter nine, three, noise of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordnances to provide an exemption for industrial-zoned properties.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, and second by Hill. Uh, I will provide the preface on that. The, uh, Bollinger Chamber of Commerce, in their attempts to recruit industries, had run into, on occasion, uh, questions from those industries about, uh, our noise ordinance, and whether it would be applying to them. Uh, my opinion is that it did not, but in order to clarify that, we've added this language to make sure that it would not be an issue from before. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Danning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wolferson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance, BG 2013-35.
Ordinance providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds. An ordinance of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, authorizing the issuance of City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2013-C in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $3,800,000 for the purpose of currently refunding the outstanding City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, General Obligation Bonds Series 2003, the proceeds of which in turn refunded an earlier series of bonds issued to finance the construction and equipping of a municipal convention center and trade show facility. Approving the forms of bonds, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, authorizing and directing the filing of notice with the state local debt officer, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating bond payment funds, authorizing acceptance of the bids of the bond purchasers for the purchase of the bonds following the advertised sale of the bonds, and repealing inconsistent ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, and second by Hill.
Uh, to condense that down, Jeff, as our CFO, is always on the lookout to reduce our cost to use other people's money, the cost of borrowing, and he's found an opportunity to reduce that cost of money by refinancing. Uh, this will not increase the term, and we'll be able to not only cover the cost of reissuance, but save a, a good amount of money. And Jeff, how much is it?
As of today, we're looking at around 230,000. It's just going to be a five-year issue. This was set to mature in 18, but, uh, with the short-term rates being what they are, we, we could get significant savings over the next five years, so I decided we should do it, so.
No increase in debt, no increase in length of term.
Right. We, um, we'll make one more, uh, payment on the old ones in December, and then from there on, the new bonds will take over. This is a current refunding. These bonds are callable this December, which made it a lot smoother, too, which is another reason we're doing it, so. Two, roughly 230,000 over the next five years. Bond sale's set for November 7th.
Jeff, this is, uh, how much does it cost to run this company for one day?
(sigh) Roughly 130-some thousand dollars a day.
So we'll give it about two days on it, so that, that's good work.
Good stuff.
Did you spend more than two days' work on it?
Yeah.
No, good job. We appreciate you looking for all our savings wherever we can. Any comments or discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Danning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wolferson?
Yes. Municipal order 2013-171.
Municipal order approving a job development incentive fund employee withholding's credit agreement with ALPLA Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, and second by Hill. Mr. DeFabo.
I think this will be a, a group comment, if, if you all want to. Uh, there is the Job Development Incentive Committee. We have recommended that, uh, we provide an incentive. That incentive is, for 10 years, to allow this company to use, uh, to keep 1% of the occupation tax for its own uses to help it, uh, produce more jobs. On that committee, I believe, is myself, Bruce, Rick Williams, Rick, you're on the committee? No, Bill.
Bill and Melinda.
And Melinda, I'm sorry. I was going to get there.
We almost got him.
We did, we did recommend it, though.
We did recommend it, okay. Oh, thanks. Anyone else want to add anything? This is so long ago.
This is in the transpar.
This is in the transpar. It's going to create, uh, 72 new jobs, I mean, 72 new jobs, which is always a, a good thing for citizens here in the community.
All right. Any comments or discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Danning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wolferson?
Yes. Municipal order 2013-172.
Municipal order approving amendments to the local bidder preference policy incorporated in the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, manual of purchasing policies and procedures.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Williams, and second by Hill. Mr. DeFabo.
About two years ago, we passed a, a local preference policy to give an incentive to those businesses in the city of Bowling Green. Uh, at the retreat, and prior to that retreat, Commissioner, uh, Rick Williams and others have, I thought that we needed to revise that, and, uh, this recommendation in your packet represents essentially, uh, Rick's recommendation, staff's, uh, administration of that recommendation. Katie, uh, can give you some background, if needed, on the purchasing policy, but it essentially, uh, makes the policy passed two years ago more workable, and takes out the, the drop-dead percentages, and uses the sliding scale. Rick, do you want to add anything?
Nope. Think you nailed it.
Great.
Any comments or discussion? I appreciate being able to retain the local bidder, bidder preference, but adjusting it to fit our needs there, so. Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Danning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wolferson?
Yes. Municipal order 2013-173.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of an application to the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for Transportation Alternatives Program funds on behalf of the Greenways Commission of Bowling Green in Warren County.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Danning. Mr. DeFabo.
As one of our public goals, we're always interested in, in working with the greenways to expand, uh, the greenways with, within our community. Uh, this particular municipal order, uh, provides a three-headed expansion of the greenways, two in the city and one in the county. Miranda Clements is here, and would like to courtesy a, a brief presentation on this application to, uh, Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for what is known as TAP funds. Miranda?
Thank you, Mr. DeFabo. Yes, commissioners and mayor, uh, as of last Monday, I've been filling in for the greenways, so, and the Greenways Commission last Monday voted to apply for this grant. Um, it, uh, and it's to the Transportation Alternatives Program. The total amount of money in this is actually substantial for fiscal year 2013, and that's the one we're applying for now. It's eight, 808 million dollars for the national pool of money. So the Greenways Commission really wanted to take advantage of this opportunity for Bowling Green. The approximate grant request is 246,500, and that requires a 20% local match, which, I've broken this down after talking to Jeff Lashley and, um, other folk with the city, and the 20% match that we are asking the city for would be 49,300. And then that would be for the Dishman Campbell Lane extension of the Greenway and Moss Middle School, which I'll show you some aerials of in a minute. Um, out of that 20% match, 34,000 can be made up in in-kind, uh, expenses such as salary, design, that kind of thing, through in-house staff, and then that would just leave 15,000 in cash, uh, to be made up. And these figures are estimates only. We pulled this together fairly quickly, um, but the dead, the deadline for the application is in two weeks, October 24th, a little less, actually, so. But this is pretty close to what we think it'll be based on estimates on South Warren Greenway. Um, this is the proposed Greenways Trail in the south campus, campus portion, and, um, oh, there's one here. And the city portion would be extending the greenways from Campbell Lane down to Dishman Lane, and this little portion here, WKU, is going to, uh, fund. They have committed $25,000 local match towards this, and if the city would, and this grant would pay for the extension here of this part. I'll just mention that this, if this was done, this would almost complete a big loop